Cameras are on. And here's Rich Maggie, so it's official. Okay, so we have the minutes from last time.
Recording in progress.
I'll take full blame because...
No blame necessary.
I'll make a motion to...
No, we had a but.
Oh, you have, you've got problems with it?
I don't have a problem. I have a suggestion.
You should move them first.
Okay, I'll move it.
And I'll second it. And then, I would change the first sentence of the...
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. The first sentence about Steven Deut, I prefer to say that he's an energy policy person at Dartmouth.
Okay, I just took this off the website.
Yes, it feels a little weird to say he is this because I don't know that he was necessarily representing.
I don't care.
Yeah.
So that's okay with everybody?
Steven Deut, an energy policy expert at Dartmouth.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it matters. And then, and then, was it, I missed the previous meeting. Did the board invite him, or was that your...
Yes, it, well, my recollection is that I was instructed to invite him. Or, or something along those lines.
Then what's written there is true.
Well, that's a rare occasion.
No, it's not. That's great.
No, we were inviting lots of people.
Okay.
So he's one, and...
Mark Paul.
Yep, right.
And Beth McGwin, who's coming next time.
I haven't heard yet from Deena. I should have called her today, but I saw, I talked to her at the beginning of the week and she said she hadn't heard back yet, so I will keep...
Just, yeah, keep her up.
She's been very busy with trying to get some stuff straightened out, so...
Yeah, well, I think she already put a call to Eversor, you know, put a word into the guy, so...
So, did we pass that, or just move it?
I moved it.
Okay.
Right.
So...
I've asked for an amendment, but...
Yeah, so, so, we'd like, yeah, do you want to move the amendment?
As amended?
As amended. All those in favor? Okay. And speaking of Beth McGwin, she'll be coming next time where we're going to have a joint meeting. And the only Tim and Vicki have, have provided questions for us, so it'd be great if, if more of you would send them to me and David and forward them to her.
I had a question as it relates to that meeting, and that is, would we want to also invite Norwood Solar, or is that...
Well, that can, Hunter Snyder mentioned that, and I said, that's like, right next. I talked briefly to David about it, and we can discuss it now. One of the things I was concerned about was, I don't know whether it matters, but we asked Beth to come sort of as the expert.
Right.
And to sort of surprise her with somebody else, I'm not, I don't know whether it's a bad thing, but...
Have them in another meeting?
Yeah, maybe at another meeting. If, if we want.
Let experts speak freely apart from each other.
Right, have their own...
Yeah, that's fine.
So, yeah, if you want to, if that's important, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think at some point, we need to get out of the weeds and...
Oh, absolutely. I think we're close to that point.
But...
You know, there's just a lot of information.
I, I think it's wonderful information. I'm just wondering if it's something maybe the Energy Committee should be encouraged to sponsor, and then we can...
It be what?
Well, these informational sessions.
Okay. I found them really a combination of super informative and very confusing at the same time. Really, not because, you know, they're presented in a confusing way, but everything is so dynamic, changing so quickly. Even from one meeting or getting emails from people. Everything I, I thought I knew, I didn't know, and there's like something else available, so, yeah. We, but we do have to get moving. Just one more thing before we get moving. I, I think David sent you the thing from Community Care Line about the Upper Valley. Did, did people see that?
I didn't have...
It's from Hidal Communities?
No. Upper Valley...
There was something today, but this is the older one. This is, this was her old...
Oh, that is about the housing, yeah. And then there was something about...
This was about, this was about migration, climate migration. So Martha Teckah sent an email to, to three chairs, to me, to Jim Nurse of the Energy Committee, and Blake Allison of the Conservation Committee, asking if we, as a group, would be willing to put this on the listserv and say, go see it. And I, it's fine with me. But I said I have to get, if you want it to be from the Planning Board, I have to get the okay from the Planning Board. So that's what I'm asking. It's okay with everybody? Okay.
What, did that come yesterday or today?
It wasn't today. It was either yesterday or the day before.
Well, I said to, to the board today.
Yeah, it just came out.
Yeah, unfortunately I didn't get it because we didn't have internet until 5:30 tonight.
Well, that's no excuse.
Right.
That's no excuse.
I think it's April 20th, and so you've got some time to catch up. And they also, if you go to CRJC, they have a, like a white paper that was done by two Leukanyoc students. And, I mean, it frames the question, but doesn't really give us any specific data about like, you know, how many people, or, you know, what to anticipate. So I was a little disappointed in that paper. But, I mean, it's just like, we already don't have enough housing, so it's just going to get worse, so...
It, I mean, in terms of this, people should, you know, it's just more information for people.
Yeah, no, no.
There was a report on housing that just came out this afternoon.
Yeah, the Housing Needs Assessment for the state, yep.
A little daunting.
Ten thousand, right?
Oh, everything's going to be fine, so, so...
Sixty thousand.
Sixty, no, climate, ten thousand.
So moving on to solar, solar issues, because we're going to be getting to housing.
Are we going to do, do we want to, this was referred to us by the Select Board, do we need to deal with that?
I didn't see it.
Do we have, yeah, this sounded like two weeks ago.
About...
It's about the Housing Assistance Program.
Oh, I thought we did whatever we, what do we need to do?
Well, I don't think the Select Board were, can, where's, do we have, we don't have money to fund this. Does the Select Board have, and do we want to pass a recommendation to the Select Board to support this effort?
That's what, the Select Board referred it to the Planning Board for their expert analysis, of whether it was worth giving them 500 bucks.
That they'll, that they'll give, oh, what the Select Board would give to them?
Yes.
Is there, well?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like, it's the kind of task force that, you know, it's too bad we can't have it here in town, to advise people about how to go about getting an ADU in their house, that type of thing.
I mean, 500 dollars, do it?
I mean, it shows that we're supportive, and it's for staffing, you know, getting people who can provide that kind of assistance to people.
I mean, we have to take it on trust that that's, you know, it'll be effective. But it's fine with me if, if the Select Board...
So should we vote as a Planning Board, I'll make a motion that we encourage the Select Board to support this effort, this regional effort, as a way of bringing housing to the Upper Valley.
Sure. All right, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if there was a, a dollar amount that you wanted to recommend. It's open-ended completely, or just leave it to the Select Board to decide.
I think we should leave it to the Select Board, because we, we don't have...
I mean, not a lot. I mean, we may want to have some money to do something too. So, so, whatever they feel is appropriate, just to show the town's support. Because I think we could probably, somebody in town would use it.
They'll have to come out of some fund, right, that they have.
Right.
Do we want to propose a number? Because if we just say, you should pick a number, and the Select Board says, all right, $1.37.
Well, I don't, I really have no idea.
I don't know what they have in this...
Without Dave here to say, we have funding here, here, and here.
I mean, I'm certainly not going to ask the town to spend their last free nickel on this either.
Could we propose a couple hundred dollars, is that...
I think the Select Board needed to decide, because they know how much is in those funds. You know, how much, because...
But even the board can, would, can make a suggestion and say, we, the board suggests the Select Board spend up to, or...
I really don't feel comfortable...
I don't, I don't have a context.
Providing a dollar amount, because, yeah, as you say...
If we said 500 dollars, why would we be saying that?
Yeah.
Basically, I think what we're saying is, we, we think it's a good idea, and we think, if you want to spend money on it, please do. We're not in a position to...
Financial contributions are requested in the range of 500 to 5,000, if possible.
All right, well, that's their range.
You know, you can't...
So that's their range.
So we might all amend the motion to say not to exceed 500 dollars.
Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that makes it easier.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't give anyone that anyway, so...
Well, maybe they shouldn't, so they know what they have.
And not to exceed means it can be less.
Right, right.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So David and I were discussing stuff, and if you disagree, by all means speak up. But we thought it'd be good to move on to creating criteria for David to do solar mapping, so that we actually have something to work from, regardless of what we do with it. So is that okay if we go down that road? So the, David came up with three criteria. One is the, the arc range of the panels.
You know, what we're thinking about is, you know, how we want to, when you're looking at a site, you know, if you think of, you know, the sun being at a particular angle, a panel can work in a particular range. If you're on the backside of a, on a north-facing slope, not going to work. So we were looking at, looking, when we narrow down areas, narrow them down by what direction their slope faces.
Are these movable panels you're talking about?
Well, movable or regular, you know, fixed panels, they don't have to all face out. You know, if you have a, an east-facing roof.
So, I mean, part of what I, again, what I thought I learned during some of these discussions is, I thought there was a pretty narrow, even with movable, it's a pretty narrow range. But then I remember, it might have been Mark, but somebody talked about, well, actually, currently you can get a wider range, and you could put stuff on top. So I don't know exactly what the parameters should be.
It might be something to talk with Beth next meeting.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Say, you know, what's a, a good range to...
Well, they, they bring a little scopy thing that, it's like, you know, gives you a, a panagram of... Oh, okay, there's nap for your phone, so I don't know if that's something you, you know, but they give you that information, and then they tell you which trees have to come down.
Are there numbers that we can use if we're setting parameters, or just say as your app says, tells you?
Well, I mean, what you have is, is an angle with respect to the path of the sun. And the efficiency of your yield is based upon how close you are to that perfect angle, so that the sun is hitting at 93 angle to your panel.
So if you're...
So it's really, the decision point is flexible. It's like, how efficient do you want to require it to be? I think that the ones that are movable are much more flexible, because you don't, you just...
They're movable, yeah.
Exactly. So, I mean, knowing the aspect ratio and saying not north, not north-facing is probably one first pass on how to decide.
Right.
Because what I understand is that most of the large arrays are fixed, right? I mean, like, they're all fixed, so they just pick the best, yeah.
The correct angle for your project will depend very much as to when you, when you want to get the best out of your photovoltaic system. You want to get the best performance during the summer months, you dangle your panels according to the height of the sun in the sky during these months. If you want to improve your winter performance, you dangle your panels toward the winter months.
So let's, yeah.
But that's the panel. We're talking about the ground.
What's, on direction you're facing your panels, and, you know, at what point, you know, is it going to no longer be economically feasible to put them there?
I think it is, though.
So...
Yeah, I think that's a good...
Yeah, she should know all that.
Me, would...
The town wouldn't be making that investment, right?
No, but, so, the idea being that if you're looking to say, you know, or I guess I should back up with some of my conversation with John, is that creating an ordinance that you, you put in criteria for where you can put solar systems. If you create an ordinance where all the criteria eliminates all the places that are economically feasible, then you're not really creating a good ordinance. So you want to make sure that, when you look at the rules you're creating, that you actually have a place that would work. So we're looking at trying to figure out, to make sure that, as we play around with the, I don't say play around, but change parameters of the ordinance, that that doesn't eliminate any place that you could put panels.
And, and we have to start from somewhere, that this just gives us a base.
So it just gives you an idea of where, you know, it's not a guarantee, but at least we, we can look at an area and say, okay, this area has some possibility for solar collection, you know, it's not a north-facing slope. And so then, you know, we can then add more and more criteria to that, and then see what you're left with. And, you know, it could be that you're eliminating all areas that you could possibly use. And it wouldn't make sense to, to do that.
So if we, if we're with the arc range, we're going to ask Beth.
Yeah, I think that's...
So the second criteria was to, and I, I mean, got confused about this too, but we talked about locating where the three-phase power lines are. So my confusion with that is, that's where they are now. Does that mean that's where they're going to be, or...
No, they can put, you know, three-phase power to any place. You know, it just, it depends on how much money you want to throw at it.
Right, and, and for the commercial companies, they, I think it might have been Mark or Steven, who said just as a matter of routine, that's normal for them, if they don't, even, even with some three-phase power, they'll amp it up some more. So that's, I, I'm just wondering how significant of a criteria the three-phase power lines, I guess as a basic criteria, is good.
It would be nice to know, you know, if you are trying to cite a, you know, megawatt solar system, you're probably going to first look at sites that are near your three-phase power. Because that's going to cost you the least amount of money to set up. Then, if you can't get anything there, then you might start working your way out and think about upgrading. Now, again, I use the, the new system in Fairly, that's up above the, the drive-in. Three-phase power came all the way from town out there, all brand-new, just for that system.
But the question I had for Beth, I was going to ask, is, okay, so let's say you want to put something bigger than five megawatt. All right, is three-phase power going to work, or do you have, do they have to put in a whole new line, you know, overhead power lines, you know, for that? Because we don't really know what is needed, I don't think, for really larger arrays.
Absolutely, you know, I don't know...
And so, you know, that, that could be a real issue.
You're, are you asking if they can use existing poles?
Yeah, existing pole, right, and all that, yeah, I mean, you know...
Poles and lines.
They, they might have to, they would have to add lines to get three-phase, because it's the three little insulator line.
Well, yeah, but I think Tim was talking about areas where there's existing three-phases.
Right, do they have to...
I think that would be dependent on what the, the lines can carry.
Yeah, does it, does it look like when you drive over to Wentworth, you know, the power lines?
Right, though, that's a little bit bigger transmission line, it's...
But we just don't know, you know, what, what's needed at different...
That's a, that's a good question for her, too.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, again, when you're looking at what infrastructure would be needed, you know, when you, they were talking about, you know, what, at the, the meeting with, that, the Energy Committee.
Here.
I can't read them.
Steven?
No.
Jim Nurse, Jim Nurse?
No, Mark, Mark's PowerPoint presentation, he talked about the capacity of the three-phase system, you know, that they were saying how much they could add to it. You know, I'm assuming that that's also based on the size wire that's on the poles. You know, you can, if, if you go up in size, you're, you're going to be able to carry more current.
Yeah, and a lot more current, do they have to go higher? I don't know what the rates are.
But, that, I don't know, the...
Yeah, so we need to...
So that's, that's another thing we can ask Beth.
And then, you know, at some point in time, you're going to get to a point where you're going to, you know, where your, your local three-phase distribution, distribution lines are too small, and you need to go with a, a much higher voltage.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
Right, but that's, at, at what point, you know, I don't think you're going to get that with these small solar systems.
We have a rare opportunity to have a member of the public say something.
It strikes me that a way of proceeding is to decide what we don't want. And speaking for the public, yes, speaking for the public, we don't want solar arrays in our, in our conservation zones. Here you go.
Okay, that's fine. And I'll note that 100% of the public stood behind you on it.
And the other thing I'll, I'll comment on is that in an earlier meeting, David Kahn was, as I recall, was concerned about beefing up the transmission lines, the aesthetic impact. So we, it strikes me that as a community, we know we want solar power. We know, we know that there are sources for it, but we want to figure out what we don't want.
Well, we have eight people on this, on this, what is it, a board, and, and that's what we're going to figure out.
Good.
What we're, what we're doing here is just having something to work with. This isn't, we're going to have that, we've had that discussion, we'll continue to have the discussion. I think it's a good way to start, and in a way we did, you know, we have that, the amendment from last year, which is, you know, what we have, but it's probably not what we're going to end up with. And we did eliminate a lot of things in there, and we'll have more discussions about that. But this is, this is, this is just trying to establish, once we do decide on, or, and if we do decide on areas that we want solar, on what, what do we have to work with, and just in terms of basic information.
And my comment on that is that, particularly if we're allowing solar developers, they know far better than we do what works and what doesn't work.
Yeah, but we need, we can't, well, I guess we could, but I don't think it's a good idea to not have any information about what we're working with.
But, you know, we, we really need to tell people what they can't do.
We're going to do that.
They'll figure out what they can do.
Right, I agree, but...
But I, I think, well, I'm going to say that I think we need to be informed as to what's feasible. If we said, if we say we've got X, Y, and Z constraints, that we don't want these things, and it turns out there are zero sites in line that, that could satisfy those constraints, that's not a good expenditure of our time, if nothing else. If it turns out that, oh, practically every location in town could support this kind of thing, then we know we're not subject to spot zoning, we, we're providing adequate opportunity in the, in the ordinance for people to do this, then it's their choice whether they want to or not. So I think, I think, I've heard two of the three constraints are questions...
Well, criteria, the third, the third then would be the, probably the most difficult one, which are the parameters. So that's, we've been over that somewhat, but, and that would address what you're talking about, is where do we want these, under what conditions? And that's really, will cover a lot of territory.
So can we use David's as not in conservation districts as one of the parameters? Is that what you're thinking of for parameters?
It's, it's open to the board.
Okay, well, I, I would support that. Not in conservation districts. And I'd also want to comment on when the skiway got its three-way power up the Dorchester Road. There was significant change in, you know, the poles were much, much higher. There's also, you know, bigger clearance with tree cutting. So it, it, it isn't a minimal thing. It is actually, you know, quite noticeable when the change, and it will, you know, you'll never get it back.
Right.
Then if you take a look at the, the lines up in Fairly, just take a ride up Route 5, the original poles are still there. So you can see the difference between the three-phase and...
So before saying absolutely not to conservation land, because not all...
These are, these are conservation districts.
District, not every conservation district is a uniform piece of land.
No.
It might be worth asking the holders of the conservation easements in some of these, whether, what their opinion of solar power is.
But are we talking, but that's two different things.
Yeah, I'm talking about the zoning conservation districts, and I don't feel it's appropriate...
Not, not easements.
To put structures for solar if we can't put structures for garages or other things.
So she's talking about things like steep slopes, wetlands.
Right, the ag soils.
Ag soils.
The shorelands, that, and that, that's, those are the conservation districts.
Not easements.
All right, I'm happy with everything except the ag soils.
Okay, well, that's good.
Well, we can have that discussion, we, we will have that discussion.
Well, and, yeah, we have a bunch, a whole bunch of them, and I don't think we actually, that I stated all of them, but I'm going to say blanket in whoever's in the zoning, all of them.
Okay.
I, I kind of have a question, going back to where we are and where we're trying to get to. Have we established that what size we think is appropriate, and, and, you know, if, is it possible for us as a town to say, we only want a certain number of this size systems?
I don't think we can say, I don't think we can, we can say a number of them. What we can do is, is get an idea of...
How many are possible?
Yeah, which is part of the reasons to have a mapping.
Hugh Sartre suggested limiting the number, and we at that time realized that you can't do that.
Yeah, but we could conceivably say, well, it, let's just say we picked a, an area, just to make the discussion simple, that we could, we called the solar energy district. And we'll make it a square. And we figured out, we'll never know, but we could get X number of systems in there. I think we could do that. But I don't, but we couldn't say, we only want five, one megawatt.
Or could, or let me put this in a different way, could, could we as a community only, could we as a community somehow allow a non, not-for-profit, local, community solar farm that is meeting the needs of Lyme residents, say?
Well, that's it. My opinion is that, yes, yes.
So that we don't end up with 100 sites.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, I, I don't think it would be a zoning issue, if, if, under that regime. So, look, yeah.
Are we looking at just really where three-phase is? Is that what we're, because it seems like there isn't that much three-phase, I mean, we, David, you could almost figure out using just where three-phase is, pretty much what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically... You see, coming up...
What did you say?
I say Mark has dozens of sites, and the analysis he did.
And, you know, it's a starting point. I don't think it's something that's that solid, because if, if a for-profit company wanted, you know, found us some land that they wanted to use it, I don't think they'd be too upset about, you know, running the power lines up there.
Yeah, whether we want that or not, yeah.
Once again, our unruly public is...
I'll preface my remarks by saying that Barbara Robey has told me that I have to be careful, because she's going to end up hating me. So I'll try to be a little bit, but I, I, again, I think that, I think the goal should be to just define what does it work, and let, and let the market figure out. I think the goal should be to just define what does it work, and let, and let the market figure out what does work. What doesn't work is solar arrays on, on conservation, in conservation districts. What doesn't work, I suggest, is a solar array that is of, by a for-profit developer who's shipping the electricity to Massachusetts. We can have solar arrays that are dedicated to the people in the town of Lime. And that's really what we want, we want green energy for Lime, and if we're going to have solar arrays in the town of Lime, it should be for Lime residents. And I, and the, and the other overarching point that I'd like to make is that what we really want is inexpensive green power, and maybe it can come from Lime, in Lime arrays, but maybe it comes through the, through the, I call it, the community power coalitions from abroad. It's cheaper to get offshore wind power from Rhode Island or Maine, we should be doing that rather than having it here.
I think, David, what the, the problem is that when Kierzaj came and presented to us, we realized how much we didn't understand, and so we're on a broad, fact-finding mission at the moment, so that we are not so dumbfounded by somebody coming in and presenting.
Understood, and I couldn't agree more, that's exactly what...
I, I think we already did some of the work you're talking about, and we're gonna, I hope we're gonna get it nailed down pretty well, but exactly what Evie said is, we, we realize our ignorance, and this, we're kinda starting over again, hopefully with more recognition of what we don't know, and, and kinda get back and past where we were, but I, I think, I know you, I know you'll be delighted with what we do.
I have no doubt.
I feel strongly about it.
Well, I, I, it was pretty interesting when Stephen Boyd was here, because we were talking about, okay, well, if we just wanted to do something for Lime, what we would think about is having our own little grid system with storage, because obviously you don't get solar during the night, and, you know, winter nights are extra long. So, we'd have batteries across, all over town that we would end up tapping into, so, you know, there are other communities that have their own electric companies, so it's not something unusual.
Yeah.
And there are towns that have their own phone companies.
So, this is something I, I wanted to join in on.
Do you say hybrid grid particles?
Yeah, yeah, so, actually, just today, and Mark sent an article about, over in Pounton, Vermont, that Vermont Public Radio did a program on. So, they, that's a twenty-five acre array, and it supplies both electricity and battery backup to the entire town, so, and this is, this is what I wanted to come around to, where I'm feeling battered by the winds and confused week to week. You know, I would've told you one thing last week, but then, you know, reading, or, not reading, listening to that report, watching that report, would I rather have a bunch of willy-nilly, one to three acre sort of sprouting solar arrays in the Lime district? Or, if we're gonna do something, would I rather have a bigger, dedicated, something that really takes care not only in, when the, when the sun is up, but basically gives us our own energy company?
Yeah, well, this...
And, and that, that is more exciting to me than us just sort of coming, throwing darts at the wall and saying, well, let's have this over here, and, because what's the logic behind it?
Right. Well, to that point, I mean, I was reading in this thing, the Green Mountain Power and the City of Rutland have installed the Stratford Hill plant, I don't know if you guys saw that, but this is a solar and battery system that can disconnect from the grid and supply critical power to an emergency shelter during lockdown. So, here's one in Rutland, it's already a combination of solar and battery.
The, the future is here. The question then, that I wondered about, and we can ask our experts, Beth, and we can ask Mark, and we can ask Stephen, and, and our experts on regulatory stuff, which I guess are supposed to be us, which is, supposing we wanted to do something like that in Lime, is that a zoning issue? Or is that something that comes through a private, a private local company, or through the select board? How does that, you see?
Well, the town doesn't have to follow zoning, so the town can go ahead and do that anywhere, right? And, I mean, look what we did with the Lime Fiber. It could be just like a Lime Fiber where, you know, it's like for the fact that we need to have, you know, the generation somewhere, and, you know, where are we gonna put the batteries or the backup? Is that gonna go as an accessory use to any, everybody's home, or, you know, how would that work?
Yeah, so that's, figuring out how, how it would work, could be a zoning issue.
If we had, yeah, and which we might need to change the zoning for.
Okay, so then, then my next question with that is, well, that's a great idea, but, you know, when's that gonna happen?
Well, the question is, is with the Energy Committee, I mean, they're the real people that would be the people to move it along, and, you know, with the Planning Board's support, but, I mean, we need people who, like Evie, are working on community power coalition stuff, to actually work on that, our own town power.
Because it might be privately funded, probably.
I would think so.
Do you have a sense of that?
It's, you know, I was just at the first CPCNH as a member, and they've hired a very impressive-looking CEO that things are just gonna start happening now, I signed nondisclosures, so.
Okay, so, don't say anything...
About who it is, but it's, it's an impressive person who's gonna be very effective, and it's gonna be announced next week. And as the Electrical Aggregation Group, we are not quite, we are very much in an information gathering phase, because there are, you know, it's like, okay, how many plans, and if you already have solar on your house, and CPCNH hasn't conquered the net metering problem yet of buying back.
I know.
So, so, I mean, until that, all of those things are, you know, it may not be effective for Lime to go that way, but we are in the embrace the information, act like we, we're gonna go that way, and then decide if we wanna present it to the town at town meeting. But, and learn from the thirty communities that are going live in the next month.
So, based on what you know or anybody else knows, in a scenario, just say in a fantasy world, that we, we got something like this that was feasibly gonna be built in Lime, is that something we would have, could, if we had everything set up, could we do that tomorrow? Or would we still be working with the constraints of what the grid would take? If we were gonna be independent, how independent would we be?
So, ever since, let me, let me sketch out how this could work. If the town were to do it, the town would not be subject to zoning.
Right.
The town would have to hire somebody to make it happen, they would have to hire somebody to come and design it, site it, arrange to purchase the land, or whatever, and, and get everything and, and make it happen, and that's, I don't know, that's a big chunk of money to find somebody to do that.
Fixers are available all over the place.
What's that?
We can get a fixer.
That's right, that's right, that, that could be done, and the town could choose to do that. The town would have to raise the dough to do it. The other opportunity, other way to approach it would be to have a private company do it. And that would absolutely require changes to the zoning, to, I mean, we're wrestling with, oh my God, if somebody wanted to put up a one-megawatt array, well, it's gonna take ten, twelve megawatts to serve all of Lime, plus the batteries to back it up, plus all this other stuff. So, there's a very significant capital upfront, capital cost.
So...
Didn't we say that five megawatt, I think, I thought it works at one point.
That's only for residential, see, we've got all the businesses, the schools, and skiway, I don't know.
I'm making a...
So, in terms of the zoning, and let's put aside, like, the Kierzaj-type projects, but because what I think we're talking about here is, is something that would basically make Lime as independent as possible, especially with, with power outages and things. So, whether it was the, the town directly, or a private developer, the, the town could still say, or maybe they couldn't, and, and this is a question, could the town say, well, this is something we want, so we're going to, and we want it here, this, this private developer wants to put it there, and we are enabling it, in other words, the select board.
The, the town could do that, yes.
So, however, you still have to hook into the grid, and you still have to contract with the people who own the poles.
So, that's the lack of independence.
If we ever get EverSource here, we can talk about that.
But...
Well, you still pay your thirteen-dollar distribution fee every month, so, you know...
Thirteen, I pay seventeen.
Well, I have, EverSource, and they charge me thirteen.
Oh, because you have your own solar...
Well, I've seen how much it costs, and that's what I pay, when, when I'm generating a hundred percent of my own power.
So, unless this is done under the sponsorship of the town, at the behest of the town, there, there are very real zoning questions.
Yeah, no, there's no doubt, it's, I'm talking about this type of project.
Right, so if the town did it, and found somebody to do it at their behest, then I guess they could just say, run, put it...
That's what I would...
That's what they overdid. Their array, they had to get state permitting, but they had no zoning, no site plan, went right and did it. It's up on, by the, where the water company is, on...
Gracie Road.
Gracie Road, yeah?
How many megawatts?
I don't know, five, big.
So, it's like twenty-eight or something.
It's big.
Yeah.
Okay, so, once again, our public, our public has a comment, yeah?
Okay, the basic is that we want green energy for the town of Lime. We want the least costly green energy we can get. That's what we should be focusing on, and there are two ways of getting it, I think, or three ways. One is through the community power coalitions, and incidentally, I think you all should talk with Keen as well as with...
Yeah.
One is that route, and it strikes me that it's highly likely that that will be the cheapest source, because that aggregation, that combined purchasing power ought to give us the lowest possible rate. And, and alternative that I've spent some time thinking about is a Lime Fiber-type arrangement, and I, Mark was kind enough to run some projections for me, and I don't think it works. I don't think that the returns on investment are adequate to produce the investment. And so, I'm thinking of an alternative approach, was, which is a municipal system in which the town builds and owns the system, and it's, and it's funded through a combination of municipal bonds purchased by wealthy people in the town of Lime, plus federal grants and, and financing. There's the twenty-five percent investment tax credit that comes to a town, as opposed to an individual, in a check, it comes directly. There are also loan funds that could make it possible, make it cheaper to raise the money. The bonds would be, the, the bonds would be the full faith and credit, not of the town, but of the system. So, the town would not have any liability for the bonds, and the, and the interest and the principal on the bonds would be funded by charges to the, to the townspeople who are buying the electricity from the municipal system. That's worth looking into.
So, yeah, it's...
That may be cheaper than going through the community power coal...
If, if there was a failure, an economic failure of that system, who would people go to to get their money?
They wouldn't be able to get it, the bondholders...
The bondholders would take the loss.
Take the loss.
And that, that would be the end of it.
Oh, the, the town doesn't wanna take the liability, and I don't think it needs to. I think there's enough money in the town of Lime that would respond to the, would respond to the, the notion of having green energy in the town of Lime, produced in the town of Lime.
Very possible to likely, yeah.
So, if that were to happen, then that, so let's say we had twenty-five acres, whatever, solar arrays in town, that electricity would be used just for Lime, so we could go to the grid.
This is like in Pounton, it's, that energy is just for...
But then we would have to have enough storage, so that everybody would have electricity all night, so that, and that would be the key.
Yeah, the system would be a combined solar array plus storage.
So, we'd have to, like, well, I guess, yeah, so, so we would be totally into, unto ourselves.
Well, except, except for, for what Evie was saying, is we can't get independent.
Well, right, but I mean, all the electricity generated would go to Lime, and, yeah, well, that would be, now, just another, well, this may be not apropos, but I just found out a couple days ago, that New Hampshire Co-op is starting a new program, this is just interest, I don't know, that they're doing a variable rate charging, so, when you, if you generate, or take your electricity off peak, or in the middle of the night, the best, the rate would be lower, so if you have a electric car, you charge it at night, you do all this stuff, and they're encouraging people to have batteries, so that you charge that battery at night, then you sell that power back from your battery at peak time at a higher rate, so actually you can make money just by buying the electricity at night, and then selling it back to the power company at a higher rate, so, I mean, that's really interesting, that they're starting to do, you know, this variable rate.
Liberty, Liberty did something, a variation on that some years ago, in, I think, eleven, where they bought people power walls, and basically let them use it, but they, their arrangement was that they could pull the energy when they needed it, yeah.
Well, the other thing that they were saying too about this is that when there's peak energy, I think EverSource buys from, or maybe, I forgot, buys energy that's generated by a coal plant, so these coal plants fire up when there's peak time.
Yeah, I don't think the Boe one didn't make it this...
Right, I did, but I guess, so in any way, if there was enough storage and people were putting it back in, then the power company would never have to, and so, you know, all that is great.
So, David, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't know if that, it doesn't really apply to what we wanna do unto ourselves, but at least the power companies are really starting to do things, I think, to make it, I think, some power...
So, David, you said three things, and I have, I have on my list two things. What was your third?
What, what are your first two?
The, the CP and H, is that the name?
CPCNH.
Oh, CPCNH, okay, and then a Libra, Lime Fiber-type thing, which wouldn't work, so that was the second.
Right.
And...
Bonds, the third one is funding things through bonds.
Yeah, bond, yeah, so, but you said you had a third, which...
That's the third.
That's the third.
Oh, so the Lime Fiber was the second that didn't work?
I'm sorry, let me back up. For a homegrown system, it's either a Lime Fiber-type...
I get it, I get it.
That does not work.
Okay.
Or a municipal system that may work, we haven't done the numbers, we don't really know.
Okay, so, but, so what we came away with are two?
And the, no, and the third approach is through the community power coalition, through the, through the alliances. And I, I suspect that that's gonna prove to be good.
I'm still confused, so, the, the two feasible ones that you're talking about are basically the CPCNH and a bond-funded entity, so they're really two workable ones, okay, that's, I just wanted to get that clear.
Right.
Okay, that's...
I think it said that CPCNH, people who have solar already can't join in.
So, when you sign up, or when people, you, you have, similar situation?
So, there's like, what, ten percent of our, our community can't...
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent, there's eighty, eighty homes.
So, so, those are, they're all pretty much, let's just assume they're all signed up, like you, what, what is the contract? How many years?
I think it's for the life of the solar panels, it's like twenty-five.
And I thought you said something... And I thought you said something about how there was some movement towards, you know, basically them released or some oversight.
Right, there's some really.
Releasing you from.
Some people in Hanover, or, you know, the energy people, you know, have been on their, that committee, you know, they all have solar on their houses, and here they are, you know, supporting the community solar and the community power coalition, and, you know, yet they can't access it.
The irony, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's, that's great. And I don't know if it's our legislators that need to work on getting the utilities to lighten up or do something to release us from the.
Listen, that also probably part of the PUC legislature, or the PUC's authority. I mean, the the rates that you and I have, I don't know, mine's an N rate, I think, or, you know, my solar thing is an N permit, you know, which is apparently a very good one. But like you say, we can't shop around for our power. But I suspect that the PUC is gonna change the, change the the way they do the tariffs. And at that point, maybe that will allow.
Well, you know, that's just another avenue that needs to be worked on.
They did say that one of the first tasks, that they're gonna try to get the CEO to figure out net metering. Because that's the thing that's locking you in, is that the other companies don't do net metering. I will say that there does seem to be some spirit in the land to try to undercut the efforts of CPC and H.
Yes.
And a lot of the lobbying is against letting communities do the kinds of things we're talking about.
What a shock.
Or having storage.
Yeah.
So, you know, the PUC is unlikely to step up and really help us here.
It hasn't been very forward.
And direct, and I signed up for direct energy as an experiment to see what it was gonna be like and how difficult it was, was easy.
Yeah.
And I got two years at fifteen cents a kilo hour.
Right.
But I can quit at any time.
Right.
But I think that they're doing it as a loss leader.
Right, after two years it'll.
Yeah, yeah, they're trying to, some community power coalitions have failed in other states, and it's because there's not enough uptake. It was an opt-in instead of an opt-out, and there hasn't, there wasn't enough uptake by the population. So I think we have to be like ears to the ground on a lot of what's going on around here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have, I have a really basic question, excuse my ignorance on this. But I just, I've been trying to figure this out. Okay, so you generate, you have solar power, you generate during the summer or whenever. You're generating during the day, and you're using everything that's, all your power. And if there's any extra, then you sell it back and you get it paid for, correct? Okay, so what?
Not to get paid for to get a credit.
You get a credit, okay.
And so in the winter, you know, when I, when my panels are covered by snow, that's when I use my credit.
Right, but no, my question is, okay, so let's say the sun goes down at six o'clock in the winter or whatever. So you're not generating any electricity, but you need electricity all night.
Yep.
So are you getting your electricity, well, let's assume that somebody's on EverSource that has solar.
Right, right, I'm getting my electricity from some other.
Right, but I mean, if you're on EverSource and you have solar panels, and when the sun goes down, you're getting your electricity from EverSource, which is only twenty three point four percent green. So so all, so all night, for twelve hours a day, you're getting energy or electricity that's not green.
Yeah, definitely, and you know, and it's it's a little bit more complex because my energy goes into the grid. I don't use my, the photons or whatever that I make. Those are not mine, they go into the grid, and then I just use the grid, which.
So you're using the grid all the time then, really?
Really, because it's not, I'm on grid.
So all that electricity, assuming you're getting it right from EverSource, I mean, you're not, but is all that bad, all that bad electricity?
Yes, and I can't get out of that. Okay, and yeah, so that's, that's not good.
So Hemi and I had signed up for a job, we signed up for direct energy.
Right, I know, it's so great.
So we're getting supposedly a hundred percent green here.
So, Vicky, are you saying you can't change providers?
I can't change providers.
So, I mean, does this have something to do with feed-in tariffs and things like that?
I don't know what it has to do, and when I have called and, you know, because I I've tried, you know, the phone company was selling energy before, and I tried at that point to get a better price and couldn't because my renewable energy credits were sold to the, to EverSource.
So I just Googled it, you know, can I switch energy suppliers if I have solar, solar panels? And they say, yes, you can.
Does it say in New Hampshire?
This happens to be in Vermont.
Yeah.
Well, see, that's.
But in New Hampshire. So it's it's only in New Hampshire?
I don't know.
And it presumably is a law or?
It's waiting.
Presumably what? A law.
I don't know exactly how it's set up, but it'd be, I'm not, it'd be interesting if you put it in New Hampshire and see if you got a different result.
Well, the other thing is, is that since I put my panels on, I've, you know, transitioned a lot of my power, you know, my heating and, you know, changed from propane to electricity, and now I'm a plug-in car. And I need more, I need more power than I did, you know, seven years ago, when I put those panels on.
More more electric power.
I need more electric power, yeah. And and, you know, and I'm paying like ridiculously high rates.
Yeah, I mean, it's terrible that when people do the right thing, they end up with a.
Well, that's the whole thing about the technology changing, that's, you know. And the other is if Lime does this municipal thing, we need to make sure that we're protected from the state and the PUC, and that we're able to.
Right.
Continue our, you know, without without interference from from the power company because they're losing money on, you know, other places.
Okay, so.
Can I, can I share just a little, remember Stephen Doig was talking about the duck graph?
Right, I remember the word.
I found an example of what it is.
That's pretty, pretty ducky.
What happens is, here, I think I printed a couple of copies.
Oh, great, thank you.
It's so cute, especially appropriate for Easter.
Are there Easter ducks?
I need just by seeing them.
So what happened, this the duck, this duck is actually Western Australia, but it was just a lovely graphic that shows you how it happens. And then down the bottom is in New England, what happens in New England. So when he was worrying about the duck graph, I'm like, well, we've got a ways to go before we we get there. And the only point I really wanted to say was, you know, when we're talking about buying direct energy, we're buying electrons from Texas essentially. And I I wasn't too happy when he said it's just scrub land in Southwest.
That was very, very inappropriate.
Because it's like our, our ecosystem is virtuous and wonderful.
Your point is, is totally separate.
Regenerate.
Right.
I mean, what we have is a second growth, hundred and fifty year olds, fire suppressed, you know.
Well, I wouldn't undersell ours either.
No, it's good that it's contiguous land, but it's not in any way a climax ecosystem, so.
Well, the other is that, you know, the little lizards that live in the scrub land there have every rate, just like our, you know, Ebsa.
A book that made a tremendous impact on me when I was young and starting out in the world was a book called Texas Wild, and it was about West Texas and about, and the the life.
Yeah.
The vitality in those scrub lands is remarkable.
But it doesn't regenerate very well because it's, I mean, it's resource limited. But anyway, I just, I just thought this was interesting. If we could get to having a duck problem, and then we're taken off the head because we're doing storage, that's where we want to go essentially.
So Hemi, what does this mean exactly? I mean, I'm trying to figure this out.
Which, which one are you looking at?
The New England one or?
Well, either.
The New England has, has, has the daily demand for.
Oh, okay, okay.
And each color is a different season, so you got July and October are the lowest demand. And then January and, I mean, July is high, and January is high, and July and October, and August, April and October are low.
Because of air conditioning and heating, right?
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So I just, I just thought.
Thank you, this is a nice visual.
Interesting to think too, if we actually got to a duck problem, they would tell you, use electricity during the day.
Right.
And don't use it at night.
Exactly.
Because.
Because you're generating.
There's, there's some solar energy available during the day.
Exactly.
So they would reverse incentives. We ain't there yet.
And it's fine for him to talk about, you know, needing to talk of twenty to forty year horizon, but we've, they've got some immediate problems to solve.
We have, we have a ten-year horizon here to, you know.
Yeah, so anyway, trying to move this along.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wondered what a duck graph was.
I appreciate that, that's great.
I've never seen a duck graph, so.
We could have it.
Well, you might be in a meeting where you gotta, okay.
Keep the duck graph.
I'm gonna put on my fridge.
All right, so let's just, let's summarize. We have these two possibilities, but where are we with them? I mean, your situation is going to take time to develop, and and if we're just starting to talk about this today, the possibility of of a company doing this will, there have to be people in town to get this thing moving. So in the meantime, getting back to our criteria.
Well, hold a second. I think it's a legitimate thing to ask Beth when she comes here. Lime wants to do a municipal system, how would that work?
I think that's an excellent.
That was one of the questions I had.
And I think asking the Norwich Energy folks as well, having multiple experts come and talk to us, I think is.
It seems to me that that's actually immaterial. And the reason I say that is you are looking at land use, what it is that the town will accept for land use. And so your municipal system, that is, doesn't matter, they're gonna go outside the zoning. So looking at providing green energy, looking at the the, the vote in town meeting to have green energy by a certain time, is kind of immaterial. You should be looking at what it is the town will accept for solar footprint, you know, solar location.
But but those things will impact my view on what I would suggest to the town. Even if it's outside of zoning, if we did, if today we had something like that, it would completely change my view of what what I would want to allow or not allow.
Yeah, Jesse, the discussions are going very far afield on those areas.
And trying to look at, you know, what it is the town doesn't want. Yeah, I I think one of the things we need to do, and why I'm trying to get to these criteria, is this stuff may happen, and that would be great. But we need to educate ourselves, and I think part of the education is at least establishing basic criteria that we can then talk to people with, you know, well, this is what we're thinking, how would this work? But right now, we're every, we're we're gonna reinvent the wheel every time. If we come up with a three cri, three criteria, and we get shocking feedback like we got from Kirsage, then we, then we can make adjustments in the criteria. It's not a fixed, these are not three fixed criteria, but I think we need something. So is that okay if we go ahead and do that? Okay. So just to summarize, the the arc range, which we can talk to Beth about. I mean, we're gonna talk, basically, we're gonna talk to Beth about all of this stuff, the the power lines. And I think we're gonna have to decide on the parameters in terms of size and all of that. But I think we'll get a lot of information from.
Well, if we can look at, you know, and, you know, the criteria is saying, no conservation districts. That's an easy one to, you know, we look at everything, and then just take those out. That's an easy thing to do. So, you know, we can look at, you know, areas that are appropriate to, sort of appropriate slope-facing, you know, saying, okay, we can get decent power here. Distance from power lines. We need to kind of make a guess, how far do we think they're willing to go to get to existing, or what's a reasonable distance to get to three-phase power?
We should, yes, that's what we ask.
But, you know, again, conversation with Beth, because having, knowing where the three-phase is, is fine, but, you know, how far is it, is a reasonable distance to to run wires to get over, you know, from a property or a little portion of a property?
This is an ongoing education. We're gonna, we're gonna ask questions, establish parameters, and then I'm sure we're gonna change them because Mark or Stephen or Beth or somebody is gonna tell us what we don't know. But we have to start somewhere.
So anyway, just.
I did have a thought about how to do a map, which, I mean, the the distance from a power, the three-phase power, power poles are like fifty meters apart. So you could sort of have a, say, within three power, three poles of the three-phase, and you can shade these maps in different shades of like green and black, it's apparently, you know, of like, how good an area is it around those distances from the three-phase? And taking into account the slope of the face of the slope.
Well, what I, you know, I can do all that with the the GIS system, is I can take and, once I figure out where the three-phase power is, I'll draw a line, it's a three-phase power. Then I'll say, okay, give me all the area within fifty meters of, or a hundred meters or a hundred and fifty meters of that line.
Yeah.
And then from that area, then I say, okay, then let's calculate the slope of all that area.
Yeah.
And by the way, let's take out all the conservation districts of that area, what's left.
Exactly.
So that that's.
I was just suggesting that as a, that's, that's not a terrible problem to program in the GIS systems generally.
It is not at all.
So it would be some way for you to.
Something like that will give us a start.
Give us a bit of visualization of what the town looks like.
And then we can make adjustments as we go forward and we find out.
And so, you know, you go.
And then worry about the parameters later.
Yeah, ask questions to me about, you know, what, what does this look like? And we can do a map, you know, very quickly.
So it makes sense, since Beth is coming next time, it'd be a waste of your time to have you, I I think, would, you tell me if I'm wrong, to start on this, and we might as well get more information.
I don't think she knows Lime, so it might, might inform her.
I can do some of it, you know, the slope, that is a very intensive process to try to calculate the the slope of the entire town. It's a really big data set.
But just, just if you did it around the three-phase.
Right, well, we can take and pull the the, the three-phase, you know, I'll work on getting the three-phase digitized, which we just, I'm gonna draw a line where I think the three-phase is. And then we can, you know, look at areas beyond that, then we can also bring in.
Black out the conservation.
Yeah, we take the conservation districts and say, nope, these are.
We're not, we're not gonna do the mountain forest district, we know that.
Right, so we'll take out the mountain forest district completely.
And whatever other districts we, we.
Would he only be looking at cleared land?
Good for before.
Don't be, any, any, for now, yeah, but we can.
What about, what was your question?
Would he only be looking at cleared land, or?
No, we can, I mean, we can only look at clear land, but we can't put, I, at least I don't think we can put anything in the ordinance that would say you can only do this on cleared land.
People can log.
We could, we could do like, you know, you could only do this on, I don't know that we could do this, but.
You can't regulate logging or.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
I'm sure the state does that.
Right, so.
And just remember, pretty much any cleared land in Lime is going to be ag soils. And so since that's, there's very little land, you know, it's just because, you know, this was a farming community, so all the ag soils were cleared. So you're probably going to find that a majority of the property that is, that doesn't have trees, is ag soils.
Yeah, I, I just was gonna say, it seems like at some point, fairly soon, we should, it would be really beneficial to know how many megawatts Lime would actually need to.
Because we could.
Because then, because then, then we're gonna know how many acres we're gonna need if we, you know, do something for just the town.
So part of the aggregation work is a request we have into EverSource and cooperative work, consumer, consumer level data.
Right.
And I'm gonna munch that, I mean, we haven't, we've just, we've just started this all up, so it's gonna take a while.
Because that seems like it's pretty important, because then, then we're gonna know how many acres we need if we really wanna do something just for Lime, and that would make a difference on, I mean, where's that goes and all that.
Napkin level calculation by saying households and then.
We have that, it's just knowing what the skiway has got to be a pretty big power hog, right?
Yeah.
Is, and and then schools and.
Schools have got panels on, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's just a number, I mean, it's not, and.
And then cushion because it's going to increase.
It's very sporadic, you know?
Yeah, but even so, I think it's pretty intensive. When you hear the.
Pumps.
Pumps going, yeah.
Yeah, well, anyway, yeah.
All right, so what do we want David to, to.
Here's just an example, this is.
Can you see his Mark's map of power lines? Because he mapped that.
Right, well, he grabbed it from.
I don't know that he.
He was always.
I think he was a little off for you.
This is just a mapping of all the agricultural soils here in town. And I happen to have all the parcels over it, but here, let me. So you can see, you know, there. A lot of stuff along most of the roads, you know, again, because that's how Lime was developed.
So if you look, I don't know, make it. This is Shoestrap Road and this is Bailey's Field. So maybe, well, right down there is where he was planning on putting the Kirsage Array.
So.
But if you get out in that field and you dig agricultural soil, that's much.
Just, just because it's agricultural soil doesn't mean there's not stones this big in it.
Well, and that is clay.
Well, yeah, there's different levels to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
There's social importance and.
This was all done by aerial survey.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, this is, right in here, if you can see where my mouse is, that's the area that, where they were considering putting the Kirsage Project.
So are, are we looking for the three-phase power?
No, I, you know.
This is an example of mapping.
But this is just an example of, you know, we were talking about ag soils and, you know, when we're, we're moving areas out of ag soils.
I was just trying to anchor you in some local, you know, Route 10 is coming right down like that. Shoestrap Road is going across like that.
This is Route 10, Shoestrap, yeah.
Well, it's been, you know, it's been proven that this map is not accurate and you need to get on site and, and find out what soils are really there anyway. Many people who have wanted to do development have had soil people come and reconfigure the lines that we see there.
Well, you saw at Lockline Lodge, when I reconfigured it and it was a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit, you know, it's.
The STs when they did their developments, same thing.
Yeah, so.
So, but if, if Dave could come back with this shaded three-phase and then, you know, 150 yards on either side.
Well, it should be 200 yards. You've got three poles.
I was arbitrary, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Just to show and then.
Yeah, we can do that slowly.
I think the plot overlay, the, you know, plot overlay helps because then people know where they are.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, you've got wetlands.
Yeah, make them black or something so that it's like, absolutely love here.
Amy, do we know, are we just sort of guessing at 150 yard? I mean, as far as how far they want to go from three-phase or we?
I was making a first pass of something that we could understand.
Poles are about 150 feet apart.
So where are we getting the number from that, that this is a good number?
Well, you, it seems unlikely that you would want to run for a half a mile.
The company that's doing it.
Right, yeah, so.
Right, well, yeah.
But how do we get, this is just a ballpark?
Well, it's just, it's just, I mean, it's not ter, he's doing it on a computer, so we can change it.
Okay, so that, just trying to understand.
200, 150, 200 is just like, let's look and see what it looks like.
Gives us a starting.
Well, we can ask Beth what she thinks is feasible, too.
Exactly.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Got to eat the elephant one bite at a time.
Right. Okay.
You have to eat the elephant one bite at a time.
How do you eat an elephant?
One bite at a time.
Yeah.
I've never heard that. That's a good one.
Is, is this shading here, David, is this slopes?
Yep, these are slopes. They look like, you know.
Oh, yeah.
It's easy, like next to.
Long Hill.
Yep, I can take off the steep slopes.
Yeah.
It's good.
So.
All right, so, so you'll do that?
I'll do that.
All right, and then we'll refine our criteria as we go forward. And I, I assume that by the next time we meet, the CPCNH will have established all the information that's necessary and that the company that was discussing.
Got a complete data analysis of Lime.
Yeah, and the, and the company that is going to undertake supplying Lime with energy will be nearing the finish line. And the world just looks brighter every moment.
I'm drinking from a fire hose right here.
All right, so, so we'll, we'll count on that. What, what else do people want to?
So I guess a couple of things. Do we, do we want to publicize or announce Beth McWynn's presence here?
Finally.
I mean, I think, I think we should, I mean, just to show that we're out there, we're bringing in experts. If anybody wants to talk and ask questions, they, they surely would be.
Invite the Energy Committee and the.
Their, my understanding is that that's a joint meeting.
Good, good, good.
Yeah. I'll double check with them.
Yeah, just, just make sure. And how would that, what do you want to do? How would you like to announce that?
Just a note on the list? Three out of every two people in Lime.
Three out of every two, I guess I'm, I'm one of the.
Right, wait a minute. But I, I, I don't, I don't see any reason not to have.
I have, I have no.
And then Dina can post it also through the Lime official webpage.
So, all right, so what's the procedure by which we, just, you want to write, what do we want to say? Let's nail it down if we're going to do it.
Yep, if you want to just write up a, something, I can get it posted on Pliserv and.
Okay.
Yeah, just say it's a joint meeting of the.
I'm sorry, well, let's, let's write it out, so.
And we'll be, you'll be talking.
What, what is the date we're talking about? The 27th? 4/27.
Which is a reminder that the 27th is the day that the bridge is going to close.
Right.
Good reminder.
Two weeks from today.
Yeah.
There's a joint meeting of. So is this also considered the CPCNH too, right?
Was with Com.
Yeah, okay.
Jim's on both.
Okay, so P B, C P.
Especially LEAC.
What is it?
LEAC.
The LEAC.
We're the leakers.
Do we want the Conservation Commission?
Oh, all right, so you're, you're, okay, yeah, you're a leaker.
Do we want the Conservation Commission to join?
Um, we could.
I mean, it seems like.
Well, Jim, let me know ahead of time because now we're talking about it, you know, I have to make sure that the postings are for all three committees.
Well, I know, actually, when, when Blake wrote back to Martha about the housing thing, he said, you know, he was aware of this issue and the way he put it, something to the effect of, and the Conservation Commission is very aware of the potential impact on our natural resources, so he might have a perspective that we want to hear.
Part of the, part of the press push for you guys to post about it is because they've been, CCL's been posting three or four times a week and it's been annoying people, so they're trying to get others.
They want other people to annoy them.
Share the burden.
I can call Blake if you want.
Just listen, let me know if, if they're, it doesn't matter to me if they come or not, but I need to know.
We're talking about the Planning Board LLC Energy Committee.
Is this 7 o'clock?
Yes, 7 o'clock. With, with Beth McWynn, a representative, what do we say about her?
She's got the CEO.
No.
No.
Of Revision Energy.
A representative.
Are there? She's not.
Energy, to, to discuss.
I thought you would want to say.
To discuss solar energy issues.
Well, you know, we might want to say large solar arrays.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And get people to come and really listen about it.
Okay.
And, I mean, I think if you put in large, that might, might get more people to decide they want.
Why don't you make it large intrusive solar arrays?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
How hideous, hideous, large, repugnant, exactly what you don't want.
And we should definitely have large, because otherwise people are going to think it's all the backyard stuff and they're going to.
And it's, the problem is people come and ask about their own personal problems.
Right. Well, we can't answer that. But this is.
But it takes up time.
Yeah. Well, we, we are, it's part of our obligation to engage the public, so we have to deal with that regardless.
Do we think this room is big enough? I mean, how many energy?
This town isn't big enough.
If, if we were to get a full room, that's really amazing.
We have, I, we've had big crowds in here, but I can't remember. Well, we did, no, we had overflow crowds, I'm sorry, we did.
We, yeah. Right, and I think it'll be on Zoom too, and I think that will be a pressure.
Putting it on Zoom is key, yeah.
All right, so I'll, I'll write this up and if that's okay with everybody. And I'll get that to you.
So do we decide about conservation?
Um, well, I can, I'm already in a link and I can ask, ask.
You know, if they have a forum here, they, they sit in the back. I mean, if, if Blake wants to like be a co-host or whatever, fine, we'll say it's a commission meeting, but that's up to them.
So should I, should I just make him aware of the meeting?
Yeah, invite him.
Invite him.
But not as a.
Not as a.
Not as a sponsor, there's too many organizations.
Well, it's not even too many, but, you know, one barrier, but it just, it's complicated.
However you want to put it, you and I are in complete agreement with whatever it was you just said.
Okay, I was just.
But what if a quorum, quorum comes?
It's like if there's a quorum at the co-op. I mean, you know, you don't, they're not, they're not meeting, they're not taking any action, you know, they're.
It wasn't the point of it to have a forum.
Okay, so you'll let Blake do it?
I will do that, yes. So what other things the people?
So you wanted more input to go to Beth, so.
Yeah.
I will provide you some more.
Okay, so send them to me and David.
Lots of well-formed questions now.
Okay, so send them to me and David.
They'll be all the same ones you have, but it's okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's okay, we have, we probably do because both of these, these folks already sent in some good words.
And I haven't crapped off your homework.
That's your welcome to it.
Do you have the, do you, do you write down the ones that I said?
I burnt them and did a dance afterwards.
You have a record.
Yes, I do.
Okay, because I don't have a record, okay.
So it's, who's going to post to the list serve about that meeting?
I will.
And who's going to tell the select board about, just give them $500?
I will.
David.
Perfect.
And I will post it on the website too.
Said up to $500, not to exceed.
And, and I would like to welcome our public back to the discussion.
Yeah.
It's a question for the board and for Phoebe. Phoebe, what would you think of inviting the, this new CEO of the ACE to come to a planning board meeting?
I think, I think that he has people who are better, there's some local folks who are, been movers and shakers in the CPCNH. April is.
Is April 27th?
No, sorry, her name is April.
Oh.
Her name is April. She works for.
And her last name is 27th.
And there's Evan, somebody from.
Whoever, the point is.
There's some local expertise.
Getting someone to come to the, to tell about.
We're, we're going to invite them to the league group, so we would inform you guys where that's, where it's at too.
That'd be great.
Because there's many questions we have about how this is all going to play out.
Yeah.
I, I think it is appropriate for us to be, for doing information gathering, that that be.
Definitely.
Yes, that would be.
A meeting that, either one of our meetings or a meeting that.
Yeah.
I am your advocate on that.
Good, good, so keep us posted.
One more question.
Yes.
We've talked about having other people come in and talk with us. Do we want to put in our schedule maybe the following planning board meeting that we can get somebody else in and have David or you and David work to get?
Where is Beth from? Revision and.
Revision.
So there was Norwich Power and then we were going to get somebody from New Hampshire Electric co-op to do it, right?
Well, Stephen Doig was working on that.
Yeah.
I haven't heard.
Well, hopefully we'll get Eversource, because I think that.
And you're working on Eversource.
Yeah, Dina and I are working on Eversource, yeah.
Um, there was some issue, I think he said that he was.
Yeah, the guy had some.
Some issue.
Well, he was COVID and he was just getting over.
Yeah, he is having health issues.
Dealing with.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll remind, I'll remind him and see if we can, we can do that. So to, to address your, who were you saying to try and get next?
I mean, I don't particularly care, I'd just like to resume the time on a, just keep to movement.
Keep pushing it down.
Okay, so specifically?
I mean, Eversource would be great, Norwich Solar.
Okay. Uh, who wants to handle Norwich Solar if they want, I mean, if that's what people want?
I'd be happy to contact them.
Okay, you're familiar with them?
No.
Oh, okay. Why are we getting, I mean, the only thing I heard.
No, I am familiar with them. I mean, from what I've read, they've done, they're doing some bigger projects.
Okay.
In the.
In, in the area.
I don't know anything about them, except that Hunter Snyder mentioned them in that email. So it, it's really not a, to, to him as a single, but if, if the board feels that they'll, they'll be resourceful.
Are they working on things just for Norwich or are they just doing?
No, in fact, their office is in Whiter Junction, next to the main street.
So they're just doing arrays and then sending it wherever electricity.
I, I think they're just, I don't know, they've been doing some just like.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's a company, it's not a group.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought it was a group of people.
No, no, no.
So what are we going to learn from them, just another voice on top of?
Different aspect, yeah.
Well, I'd be working in Vermont, because I, Revision is really big in New Hampshire and Maine.
And I think they're also an investor-funded program, you know, where they've got investors that are.
There's not just one way for solar.
Yeah, it, it's, I mean, the projects that we've seen from Revision have been kind of a community-type solar projects as opposed to we're an investor, you know, we've got investors and we want to put these panels up so we can make some money.
So maybe you, when you contact them, you might want to ask them, you know, to remind them that we're in New Hampshire? Is that something that is up there?
And, and to say, we're specifically looking for information on larger systems we don't need, just backyard solar or something.
Right.
And they may say, oh, that's all due.
In fact, yeah, I could ask, I mean, are we talking one to five megawatt or five, one to 20 megawatt or?
Well, I mean, if we're talking about this, this, this town-wide thing, we're talking, I would guess, you know, we might be 10 megawatts.
My, my guess is if we say we're thinking about one, we're specifically interested in one to five, if we said, oh, no, the town decided they wanted to go with a 30-megawatt system, they'd say, great, we can scale up.
Yeah, okay. Great.
All right, just, I'm going to not be here on the 11th, which is the first meeting in May.
Okay, and would you be back on the next one?
Yes, which I think is the.
That would be 25th?
Yep, the 25th.
Okay.
So I, you feel free to do anything without me, I just.
We, we would, we cannot do anything without.
Do we have any planning board cases coming to us?
At the moment, I have not heard of any. There's, I've heard some rumors and some rumblings, but I have not seen a plan or.
That's interesting.
Amazing. All right, anything else? I'd like to thank David. You're the only public that came and we, we appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
And I mean, I think, I think your two scenarios are two of the, the most exciting scenarios available and would be great.
So I can tell Barbara that it was okay.
It was okay, we, we, we still love you.
And I'll also tell her about how do you get an elephant. That was worth the price of admission.
And, and a little mustard.
I got another one. You can't get a baby in a month by making nine women pregnant.
That's.
Economies of scale.
Things take time.
Where are you getting, where are you getting your material?
25 years, 25 years of doing quality improvement and healthcare.
Those are good ones.
You, what is that again, you can't?
You can't get a baby in a month by making nine women pregnant.
That's brutal.
You have to, you know, the nine months has to go by.
Yeah. All right, thank you all, and David's education that.
Now, according to my eyes, okay, oh dear.
I know.